No.
We're not doing the YouTube thing right now.
I know, but eventually.
Yeah.
Okay. It is Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. We'll call the mean to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and up one.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed. Dawn?
We have the collector of revenues, December fees.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
We've got Campo Board of Directors meeting tomorrow. Conover's National District Board meeting tomorrow. MAC Board meeting Thursday. There's a Highway 63 Alliance meeting. I don't know if you're getting those emails. It's Friday. It's going to be down in Houston, Missouri.
Oh, that was that one. Okay.
Yeah. I probably will not go, but.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I got.
That's about it.
Okay.
I had the 63 Alliance on my calendar too, and I think they provided for a Zoom attendance on that one. The only other thing I had was this morning was a port meeting, Port Authority meeting.
Okay. Tomorrow, there is a COVID test out at the American Legion from, what time, Kristy? I don't know. Yeah, anyway, but you have to register, but there is a COVID test out of American Legion. Thursday morning, we're going to do another commission meeting. And then the only other thing I've got is our boxes are on the way, but they're going to be going into the Columbia regional postal thing, so keep your fingers crossed. We're going to deviate from our agenda since we've got BKD up, so we will go to the CARES Act funding first.
Hi, Julie.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
We'll let you take over, Julie.
All right, well, we will get started, so good to see that you all received your vaccine-related van, and so that's really nice to see that that's gone to good use. So just to talk about the remaining allocation, you'll notice that there's $159,000 remaining to be spent. I know our goal is probably try to wrap that up by the end of the month. So we'll probably talk through with Teresa any other items that she has or things that you all know of that you want to try to wrap that up. In terms of the HHS reporting, again, I'll let Teresa touch on that, but there was one item that was purchased with HHS funds, and so we'll need to complete that reporting, and we've registered, and so that's well underway, so that shouldn't be a problem.
We haven't registered yet. They're going to have to register. It just opened on Friday, so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Then in terms of, we've gotten, at least, some state questions. Teresa, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I think the state has their subrecipient monitoring procedures that they have to do. I think it's DRS that's helping them with that, so they sent an email to Kristin the other day asking for a meeting, so we'll be sitting in on that and help them through, you know, what their questions are for procurement and other things like that, so not to worry about it. Just, that's just kind of standard procedure for them, for the state. They need to do their due diligence and their subrecipient monitoring, just like we have to do it in ours, so.
And just to make a note, as you know, BKD is also working with the state. So they have accused themselves from monitoring Cole County, and that's why this third party, it's called Disaster Recovery Services, DRS. They've been helping with the, you know, additional monitoring, so they'll be going through those questions. And we'll be on that call with Debbie and Kristen. Then in terms of the budget to actual, we are still right on track with our budget. There will be, the December bill will be coming in probably by the end of the month, in January, and then we'll probably, again, just depending on how things roll out, be a final bill probably at the end of February. So possibly it could go into March, because I know there's a February bill in there to the state for any January expenses. And the last thing I wanted to just point out is if you'll look on the agenda, we have gone through all kind of the subrecipients, reviewed all the packets in terms of if there were any questions from the OIG. Just as a summary, 44 entities received money. We did follow the subrecipient monitoring procedures from the compliance supplement as identified in the Uniform Guidance and as it relates to CARES Act. We were able to identify those subrecipients, go through the Statement of Board process, also make sure, you know, a lot of that was done on the front end as we did reimbursements versus providing that those grants without the spending first, and at the end, we did a little bit of that. But to your credit, that was much more efficient, and we were able to gather most of the information that we needed upfront, so we're in good shape there. As part of that review, we were evaluating subrecipients for any risks of noncompliance, which was all covered by the subrecipient agreements that they signed. We have monitored kind of on a test basis the activities there, and then just ensured that there was accountability for any more profit subrecipients. So, you know, we'll continue if things come up to look at those and review as needed. And then just as you'll see there in your agenda as well, the reporting deadlines related to any future spending. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa.
Yeah, not too much to add. I'm not sure exactly as far as emergency spending goes. Kristin might be able to speak more to that as far as what the, what's left of that 159,000 is actual. But yeah, I see Kristin coming in, so I don't know if she's going to say something.
I think there's only about 7,900 that the Health Department proposed for vaccine clinics that you guys have approved of that 159, but I do know you have other items on the agenda today that people are talking to you about possible CARES Act expenses. So just keep in mind, right now, we only have about $7,900 worth of estimated expenses for those vaccine clinics.
Well, I think we're going to be talking about some vaccine refrigerators and then a nurse practitioner, because we're, we need help if we're going to continue to do vaccinations, so.
Just keep that in mind.
Yes.
Yeah, and then again, on the HHS reporting.
Where's your, where's your chief's?
I'm in the office today. I know. No, I have no doubts or anything like that, but yeah, no, I get to be in the office today, so no chief today, but. Yeah, so the HHS reporting, yeah, I opened that portal on Friday just for registration, so I'll begin with Kristin and Debbie to get them registered for that. And what they'll do is they'll, they'll get everybody registered, and then they'll send an email out when it's ready for the reporting portion of it, where we can actually report that. I think it was, I'm trying to remember exactly what that expense was, a cardiac monitor or something like that. Already talked about the state. Yeah, I think that's all I had, Julie.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for us, or anything else we need to be aware of?
Do we need to mention Cole County Historical?
I know we had a late comeback from Cole County Historical Society. They did sign their subrecipient agreement, and I think the commission are inclined to go ahead and pay this one. So I would ask you to approve the subrecipient agreement for, it's for $545.60.
Y'all say you're good?
Yeah.
Make a motion. We approve the subrecipient agreement with Cole County Historical Society.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. Debbie, will you send that to me?
I sure will.
Thank you.
So, is this open to other questions?
Sure.
Okay, so the CDC travel guidelines and stuff, you have to have a document of recovery. And the reason I'm asking you all about it is because when I Googled it, you know, it comes up. I said, what the hell is a document of recovery for COVID? BKD was on one of the replies, but I think it was a mixture of different things. But do you all have a form or something in particular? Because I don't think it's very clear where those come from, or is this totally out of your realm? I was putting it on.
No, let's check on that. We can check on it, and then just get back to you, how it would be.
That'd be great. I just, I know we're going to get approached at the Health Department about it, because that's where some tests come from, so that's where I would go to if you had it at the hospital or wherever. I would think that they would issue it, or your physician. Some people haven't been to a doctor in a while, so.
Well, because we should quarantine orders, I think that we're going to be able to release them or create them for travel.
Yeah, quarantine order doesn't have anything to do with the test itself coming back positive.
Here, Deb.
So.
Yeah, let me check on that, and we'll get back to you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And I'm sure you all have seen some of the proposed language regarding some of the additional stimulus related to, you know, governments, and so we'll continue to watch that and provide you updates as soon as we get those, and we'll send those out.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, but doesn't look like it, Julie.
All right. Well, y'all have a great day, and we'll get back to you on this information as soon as we get it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we will go back to our agenda. Bids and contracts, signing of the 2020 Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification.
This is the Equitable Sharing Agreement we do every year. Jill's already looked at this.
Do we have an agenda?
Yeah. Is it not out there? We can check copy out.
Because the last one I had in the folder is 112, so.
No. It's on there.
Where'd you get that one?
For my. I pulled up the agenda this morning.
It was on the email.
What email? I just went on the.
I don't have an extra one. I can give you one.
I just went on the commission agenda that we always go to, that, so the email with the invite?
Here, you can have mine.
Well, I can't click on that one. So I mean, it says, it doesn't have the attachments to it, though. You can go ahead and go with that. I was trying to find it for the stuff coming up.
Okay.
We've got some other things.
We have to approve this. Yeah.
Motion to approve the Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unfinished business, discussion of maintenance truck. Is that, is that Greg's? Okay. County maintenance, we go, discussion, Cole County Health Department on-call hours.
I don't know if they have any more information than we did last week. We reached out to the, I reached out to the county general's office, and they said it was a county attorney opinion that we should fall back on. I did find some case law that showed that, like, the city of Jackson was able to back pay their staff because of the hours worked, but I don't know if Jeff, you had more information than I was able to find.
We've been on the fine, but I just, I'm curious where it says you can't pay somebody for work performed, so.
With Jill, I'm going to do the argument with them, but we'll see what we can find.
Yeah, I need to check. I know Osage County was paying some additional funds to their health department staff, but I never got a chance. Their, their health department director just is stepping down, so I was going to contact Amanda Grellner, their attorney, and I got sidetracked and never did it, so.
Well, because I may ask a question too, if you're asking for bonuses, then I agree if you're going to do the bonuses. But this was for stuff actually performed. They actually did the work. They brought the home phone home and actually took some calls on it, so. Did you have a policy, the new policy already?
I do. The next, that's the next agenda item.
Yes.
All right.
Do you want me to go on and talk about that? Are you ready? Okay, so the next item is for us to talk about, a new policy for the Health Department. It establishes provisions to complicate staff, compensate the staff for duties or time that is worked outside of normal duties or working hours. So the first item would be that if staff were required to be on-call, where it restricts their activities, we would pay them that additional $2 for an hour for being on-call. And then the second item is for, if we have the event of a public health emergency like we are now, that we can grant staff an extra rate of pay temporarily during that public health emergency if funding is appropriated by the county commission.
Say that again, an extra rate of pay?
Mm-hmm. So if we, if the funding was available, like during the public health emergency, we could give, say, certain staff, like, an extra $2 or $3 an hour if the funding, and it was approved by the commission during the public health emergency.
I'm, I'm, I think it's been a long, long year, so I think anything we can do to supplement our employees, I'm all for it, so.
I'll make the motion that the commission adopt a policy manual amendment to establish these provisions to compensate staff for duties or time that is worked outside of normal duties or working hours.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Did you want a copy?
Yeah. Okay. And that was both of those. Oh, I think discussion of maintenance, I think Greg's got moved to Thursday. That was the deal there.
Yes, I did ask him to move to Thursday.
Yeah, never mind. So we're going to new business accounts payable review.
So we skipped the county maintenance positions too? Did that get moved Thursday too?
Yeah, I think so, because Greg's had something with his mom today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And we did the CARES Act. Is Judge Beedham coming?
I will call him.
Okay. Well, call him in the meantime, then we will go to Eric Landwear Public Works for a discussion of CARES funding.
As we've been begun implementing the Cartograph program, hopefully to be set up and up and running within a few months, there's one item that we realize that we did not add to the contract with them that we need, and it is the stormwater asset. The way Cartograph works, it sets all the different assets that you have into different categories, pavement, striping, signs, and whatnot. And just the way they group them, we missed checking this one off when we were setting up the contract with them. So stormwater is one that we absolutely have to have. It would be $2,600 extra beyond the original contract amount, which was in the vicinity of about $30,000 or so. This would be implementation cost to get it set up and going. And as I understand it, that was part of what the CARES money would allow. The yearly service fee, they only allowed one month of that, but the implementation was all allowed. So just wanted to hear your thoughts on that, if that would be something you would entertain adding to the amount of funding that we got. Be $2,600.
Kristen, is that something we can do?
Yeah, I think you can purchase, purchase the module itself, but you can't pay the maintenance fee that's ongoing.
Okay.
So. I don't know what.
I drifted off here for a second. I'm looking at something. So could you repeat what your, your ask is here?
It's $2,600 extra beyond the original implementation cost to set up Cartograph, because we did not select the stormwater asset as one that we needed. Going back and looking at it more in depth, we realized that we had forgotten to put that in there, and we actually have to have that. So we're going to do it regardless. Will the CARES Act fund, will that pay for it? That's the main question right now.
A motion to approve Public Works Director's request.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Kristy, if I'd known you were back down there, we would have just kept you up here.
That's all right.
Okay.
I'll get my stuff soon. Okay, so if it's okay, I want to go ahead and, with this discussion of CARES spending, go ahead and talk about the nurse practitioner. We'll pick up that item while I'm up here. Because as we've talked about with these vaccine clinics, we kind of went through some supplies, and we've talked about hiring additional staff, but as I've explained, it's not as easy as just having somebody that can give the shots. They have to be in our Patagonia electronic health record system, because that's how we're documenting the shot, because then it automatically goes in the Show Me Vax system. It has to be in the state Show Me Vax system within 24 hours of giving, administering the shot, because that's how CDC and DHSS are keeping track of how many shots are given, and if we don't give them, then they won't give us more. So like I said, getting somebody in there to do the shots is easy, but it's all the paperwork that goes with it. And if we add people to Patagonia, as Donna was emailing Brian already, you know that we have to pay for additional users, which we might need to do that. But Heather Hines, our nurse practitioner, that does our family planning clinic twice a month, she's already in Patagonia. She's a nurse practitioner. She's offered to work extra hours and give vaccines, and it's great for us, great experience, and she's already in our system. We don't have to do any training or any extra pay for her to have a license. So right now, she works under an independent contractor agreement for us. We pay her for the days she's there doing nurse practitioner, family planning work. So instead of hiring her as a part-time employee, I thought maybe we could just do another independent contract agreement with her, because she carries her own nurse practitioner insurance, and it's laid out in that agreement. Right now, when she does family planning activities, we pay her $500 a day. But to give vaccines, we just want to pay her $25 an hour. And she'll be there, I think, three days, one week, and one day the next, so it'd still be 40 hour, less than 40 hours of pay, period. So we thought maybe that was easier than having her be a part-time employee just because of her malpractice insurance, but it's really up to you guys.
I think that's more of a Jill question, as far as if you're going to be directing her work more than you do when she comes in just for the nurse practitioner work. I think then she becomes that part-time employee.
I did send this to Jill, and she said she was okay with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I just thought with the insurance.
Are you?
You know, yeah, it's a tricky thing. Matter of fact, one of the tricky things is to send a 1099 and a W-2 to the same person. That's tricky. So to stay with the 1099 approach, independent contractor, you do have to, she does have to have some independence with respect to setting her hours. In other words, you, if you direct her to be there and use your tools and all those things, she looks and walks and talks like a employee, but it.
She pretty much told us the hour she was available.
Okay.
We agreed to those, because she, well, she does some family planning activities for Miller County too, so we're not the only person that she works for, so.
And she will be under Dr. Kaywood's supervision, so.
His standing order.
It's, yeah, because I've checked it on all that too, so.
Motion to execute the independent contractor agreement as discussed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, so the other thing that I want to talk about, well, I have two things that I'm not exactly sure the price on, but I want to go ahead and talk about those, and then we can, when I know more. So you know that we, for a while, we had a list up to try to kind of gauge interest and see how many people were interested in the vaccine. We quickly got over 7,000 names. So, you know, there's no way all of our staff are going to be able to call all those people. We're working on the list, but in the meantime, I anticipate some of them will go to our doctor. What we want to establish is an online scheduling system, kind of like JCMG was talking about, where we'll email out everybody that already contacted us, because we can do that through a mail merge, and say, we have the online schedule up on our website. You go select a time. Because calling everybody, you know, is impossible. So we're trying to find the best solution for that. I feel remiss that I didn't act on Qualtrics about a month ago when they contacted me, but DHSS kept telling us that they were going to execute a contract for the entire state for Qualtrics. It's one of the providers, and it still hasn't happened. So I feel like we're kind of ahead of the game, so we're going to start, we've been exploring some of those other options. One was called JotForm, but when you schedule your first appointment, it doesn't automatically schedule your second appointment. And because they have to be 21 days apart, we feel like it's very simple. It would be simpler for the client to just be able to get both appointments scheduled at one time it's done, and Qualtrics does that. So we actually have a demo set up with them at 2:00 today. So we do want to pursue some sort of software, but I don't have a price or a timeline, but I just wanted to let you know that that is coming. The other thing we were talking about is go ahead and purchasing an ultra-cold freezer. We can keep it in the shipping containers for a certain amount of time, in certain amount of days, or recharge the dry ice, but Jessica is so kind to be looking at a couple freezer options for us to see if we can go ahead and get that freezer if they're not too expensive, and if we have room in our vaccine room, because, you know, that room's pretty small, and they'll have to be alarmed. So there's some things we want to work through there, but we definitely want to pursue it and see how much they even are, because that would make our life easier if we had that freezer.
That's why I thought we could tie it in with mats too.
Right, and then, yeah.
So that way, I mean.
Yeah, that was on my list too, is EMS needs a new refrigerator, because
Do both.
they're going to try to get cleared to do vaccinations. We do mass vaccination clinics. We're going to need as many providers in Cole County as possible, and we won't always be able to redistribute. I think it'll be better if they get theirs directly from the hospitals, just because of the allocations that are coming into the county. So they will need to store it at their facility, not ours. And they might be actually assessing it at times if we're not there. There's a lot of logistics with PIN numbers with the vaccine, checking it in, verifying the temperatures. So for them to have their own vaccine refrigerator would be a good thing.
I'd look at both, have Jessica look at both.
Yeah, a freezer for us and then a fridge for them.
And.
So we're dead, we're kind of dead in the water with the Show Me Vax. We cannot continue our application to finalize that until we have a model number of what we're going to be purchasing. So that's one of the questions that we have to put, because we have to demonstrate our ability to properly store and maintain those vaccines. So until we do that, we're stopped. So we would ask for emergency purchase authority to get that going, because we still have steps we have to take in order to keep this moving. We're, one of the things that we've been working with other regional health department, or health providers, is our ability to be mobile and to go to the injured patients that can't get to a mass vaccine clinic or to their private care doctor. Our specialty is going to the homes of the sick. So we can go in, give that vaccine, wait those 15 minutes, and then leave. And so we have the ability to be more mobile and more agile in giving those vaccines. We can't get those, we have to store those vaccines. So if we were to go over to the Health Department and get them, we would have a few hours to be able to do that, and that's not realistic, after hours, in the evening times, things like, so we have to be able to store our own vaccine in order to accomplish that goal. And so when I was talking with Dr. Haight yesterday evening on the phone, and our new medical director, everybody's on board with that, because that's where we become value-added, is being able to be that mobile vaccinator in those instances. But we can't go any further than we are without the approval and purchase of a temperature-controlled refrigerator and alarming system to check the, you know, to make sure that it's alarmed, because those are the requirements to do this. So we would, we would just request emergency. So we would just request emergency purchase authority to do that.
Fine.
We can bring our freezer back on Thursday once we get more info if you want.
Yeah, I had a customer come in last week whose father is 78 and he is bed bound at home. And you know, he wanted to know, he said, you know, they're doing all the nursing homes, but what about my dad? So this is, this addresses that very, very well, so.
I think that having EMS to it even over like home health will be good because, well, number one, they're used to dealing with things like vaccine. Plus, once you open that vial, you only have six hours to give it. So they're going to have to have their six appointments or five appointments, whatever, however many appointments they can get scheduled. So for a home health person that's trying to take care of the other person's needs, that's not really realistic. So I think anybody that we can get to help with those populations is a good thing.
And that'll also help with like the Tahoe's that we have. We can then, instead of having an ambulance go do it, we can deploy those out and try to get more than, you know. So we're working through those solutions.
I don't have any problem of a proceeding, it's just the order of events. I'm not sure, do we do this through the CARES money and do we have to jump through a few hoops there to make it happen? Or if you just do the emergency purchase, do you bypass that and come back and get it later?
If you could do the emergency purchase, once we know what it is and how much it is that fits their needs, the item itself, you can do the emergency purchase on that. And then keeping track of all this money coming out of the 150.
Out of the 159.
Or if you wanted to use other money for it, but yeah. So if you could give Jessica it to Thursday to get that information for both of them, then do the emergency purchase. She could put the PO in that same day if you approved it.
I know we've bought vaccine refrigerators in the past, they're usually under 4,000. And that's a Helmer, that's the Helmer ones, so.
And we're also, we would be looking at probably Medline, which we are already under a cooperative purchase agreement with. So it would just be more of the approval to purchase, so a set do not exceed. And then we would, could go do that and then bring it back. Because again, the longer we wait, the longer I'm stuck not being able to submit. Because not only do I have to work, then I have to send it to the medical director. He has to log in and finish his section. I mean, there's a time crunch there that we've been trying. And most of it was delayed by Medicare, trying to get that approval. That was a nightmare, but we got it. So now we just got to move to the Show Me Vax stuff. So I would ask, if possible, if we, because I would like to start that process today. If we can get a not to exceed, even if it's 4,000. We're hoping, when we were talking on the phone today, I think there's a size requirement I wasn't aware of because of the shipping box that they bring, the size of a pizza box. We were looking for a small one.
Yeah, well, you would have to take it out of their box, but their shipping box that we plan to leave it, they said it's about the size of a pizza box. Because I asked them like, how big is 975 doses? But if you just go get redistributed doses from St. Mary's, you don't have to get all 975. You could get a smaller amount.
Okay.
That's just if we get it shipped directly from Pfizer, we're getting 975 doses. And they said it's like a pizza box.
So if we just get to not to exceed them out, then we can go out and do that. And then we can bring it back to you after the fact for basically reapproval of the emergency purchase. I just need approval to purchase.
So when we talked about it, there was something to do with the billing.
I'm sorry?
There was something to do with the billing that if we go through the health department, it was going to be different because they do their own billing, whereas we have to figure out something through our EMS billing.
So we have separate MPIs. We cannot, we cannot bill under the health department because we are separate providers. So with a separate MPI, we would either have to look at how do we bill? Or do we just do it as free and it is what it is? Because you know, all we would be doing is basically time and yes.
Administration fee.
Right.
We get to charge an administration fee.
Right, that's, which is I think 16 roughly for the first one and 20, 25 for the second. But outside of that, there's no other cost that you can incur to the patient. And if they don't have insurance or anything, you can't charge them anything. So we would have to look at, do we want to do this just as free and we're just going to just pound away at it and do it? Are we going to want to try to set up, how do we bill for it? Do we not use the health department's billing process?
And you'll have to, since you're registering for Show Me Vax, your staff will have to put it in Show Me Vax separately.
Right.
That's something we can discuss later though. First, I mean, anything, we got to get the refrigerator for you and get.
So I've, I reached out to our billing company. I'm waiting for them to come back. It might be something where we submit something to them and then they submit it to the insurance for a flat fee of, you know, buck, two bucks, whatever it is out of that process. I don't know those answers. I'm asking documentation requirements are much different. We're more, we're used to long patient care reports. This is basically a very quick, I gave, they came, I gave and they left type of thing. So we're trying to, there are some logistics, but I don't want to go down those parts until I know I can even get approved through Show Me Vax. So we've been trying to not spin our wheels needlessly. So to answer your question, we're working that, sir, on how and if we're going to be able to charge.
Yeah, I just know that was one of the things that you mentioned, knowing to make sure that we got everybody on board who's, I guess, in charge of dispersing this stuff because it's not actually coming through the health department. So it's coming straight from the hospital.
So I talked to Dr. Haight.
It's coming straight from DHSS. Department of Health and Senior Services orders it and sends it to different places. We're trying to get it sent directly to us. The hospitals get some and then once whoever receives it directly from the state can redistribute it one time to somebody else.
That's where they're.
That's, yeah, either JCMG or the hospital, yeah.
So St. Mary's is offered redistributed and so has Dr. Haight at Cap Region.
And JCMG has too.
And JCMG. So we have a supply chain set up, basically. There's some agreements we would have to sign with them, but we can't do that again until we get those other things.
Are we all going to strictly be the mobile dispersment?
I think that once they get established, that they will get asked to also help with mass vaccination clinics because they would be dual role. They could give the shots and then if we have adverse reaction, their staff are there to help too. Because I know Jackson County's had at least three people leave by ambulance from a vaccine clinic. So it does happen and I think Cap Region or some of the other groups will be asking them to participate in those mass vaccination clinics.
And we've been asked for the Friday and Saturday of this week already. It just kind of force multiplier. We'll be able to do two things at once then.
What is the dollar number for the not to exceed?
So when I was first looking at it, I was looking at the very small ones. But depending on how this plays out, I would be remiss to say, get the small one and then me have to come back and go get a bigger one. I mean, you're probably.
Jessica, do you remember last time we ordered that Helmer? I want to say they were around 4,000. But remember we had, it was extra fee if they delivered and they said, ah.
Oh, that's right.
I mean, we just bought one that felt like.
I would say four, our goal would be to be the most cost-effective in that.
Well, let's not cut it too close that we missed it by a few bucks. So I mean, what's the harm of saying five?
Right, that's what I would do, just to be sure.
Sure, okay. And then again, we'll be judicious in how we do it.
Oh, yeah, it was because they couldn't deliver directly to us because we didn't have a loading dock, but you do.
I do have a loading dock.
And then with respect to the billing side, you know, we'll work out those details later. It's not the end of life as we know it if we can't bill a senior citizen who needs it and we don't have the ability to bill, so we can't give it. We'll still do that.
Yeah, I want to take care of our citizens.
Sure. Yep. But we'll also look at seeing how we can get them from the actual insurance company. Because we can't bill a patient anyway, it can only be insurance companies. So we'll try to do dual react.
Right, but if it's more time, then you know, the reward, the cost involved in billing is more than the bill.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, sir.
I would say for our system, we have to put it in Patagonia anyway because it directly feeds into Show Me Vax. So if we're already putting in there, we might as well bill it. There's no extra stuff.
How much is that system?
Patagonia, it's pretty cheap actually. It's for LPHA usually, but you could look into it.
If you're down at one place, I wouldn't do it at the other place, yeah.
Is there anything in addition to nodding approval to go to Thursday? You'll be back Thursday with more details on it or?
So what I would do is I'll go and we'll look today to see if we can get it. If we can get it, we would order it and then we'll bring it back as soon as we have ordered. We will bring it back. If we, if it takes us a few extra days, then we'll throw it on next Tuesday's agenda. But basically, I think we have the next reporting period, is my understanding? Is that correct? The next, the very next opportunity for an emergency purchase, you're supposed to report it out. Is that correct?
Right, so if you would find it today and order it, you all need to vote on Thursday to approve that emergency purchase.
Okay. Okay.
So if we find one though today, I mean, why do we go wait till Thursday if we make it contingent upon it being within the 5,000?
He said he could think of a way to order it, it's just.
So, okay.
I think we just have to come out and.
And say you approved a purchase from X vendor for this amount.
Yes.
So we could purchase, we would just have to report the dollar amount out and to who?
Yeah, but Princess, Jessica and she'll.
We were at 3,900 in September of 19. That's what yours was, and then $600 for the white glove delivery.
Because we didn't have a loading dock.
So you've got a loading dock, but still, you know, you'll get your toes smashed or something.
Right. And hopefully they haven't gone up because I'm sure that they're in short supply, the supply and demand part of it. Just because everybody needs a refrigerator for this right now. Because that was before the pandemic, right?
Yes, that's 4,700 right there, so we're going to, still pushing. You said 5,000, so is, I would hope 5,000 would get it.
I wasn't asking for emergency purpose for our freezer. I'll come back on Thursday. I'll come back on Thursday if you could put on the agenda for our freezer and our scheduling software, unless you want to go ahead and emergency approve that too. Part of ours is going to be a space issue. I'm going to have to see how big they are.
We can do both and just be done.
But I don't know how much the ultra cold freezers are. Jessica didn't say.
No, I had to email two of them this morning. So we should know something on Thursday.
What's the alarming system and stuff they're talking about, so they're going to have to figure out how much additional cost that would need to.
So the one we had before had an alarm on it?
Well.
The 3,900 one?
Yeah, but the alarm was probably already there because one of ours went out.
So you're going to have to get yours alarmed.
And then if we get a freezer, we're going to have to have another line run for ours because we need to just like alarm the whole room.
How much more is that going to be? Put you on the spot here, we'll put $12? You never have to be, aren't they?
Yeah, they'll have to be alarmed, but I don't know how much those are, so.
Like I said, ours has already ran to that room, it's just running another line.
So if we can, I guess maybe instead of five, go to six and include the alarm process. And again, we'll, you know, worst case scenario is if it were to be.
Those are analog things, they're analog phone lines, right? If those alarms run up.
I don't know, probably.
I think now going.
Did you have something alarmed out at ESP at one point? Was it one of the coolers or something?
The whole cooler is alarmed.
I wonder if you could tie into.
Well, what if you just shut the door and use the cooler? But that's awful big space.
And if they, that's the temporary morgue too.
Yeah, it is the temporary morgue too.
We're going to be in this in the middle of summer still, so vaccinations are still going to be going on, so.
You're electric though.
Yeah.
I thought this was over when the election was over.
Yeah. So I think, yeah.
I think we go with 6,000 and include alarming. What else are we going to need? You want wheels on it, so you can move it around?
No.
It comes on wheels.
I never thought I would get into the vaccine.
Turquoise blue, yeah, turquoise blue is coming back.
Because there's more and more stuff that comes up. We did this stuff for Public Works just now that we just did 2,600 more dollars for the stormwater part, so.
I get it, yeah.
I was trying to think of you.
You want to change yours to $6,000 then?
Well, he has the bid now at six, so.
Do I hear seven? Do I hear seven?
I'm not so sure you're not going to need to put in an analog line for that alarm system.
Alright, so we'll go to seven.
That's going to be your recurring charge. So I'll have to check it out.
Don't you have an alarm system now?
We do, well.
Say ours, we already have a separate system.
I'm giving it doing six right now and then if you find out it's going to be something crazy, but I know it's no ASAP.
I don't think it'll be anything crazy, it's just be like adding another phone line.
Okay.
So you can't use one of the existing phone lines?
I go through and take a look and see if they're all purpose or not.
Okay, absolute now?
Could be internet based, I just have to see what refrigerator they're getting and what alarm system it has to be able to.
Basically, whatever we get, then we dictate what you guys did.
They won't approve an alarmless one. You have to have.
No, a wireless.
Oh, wireless, okay.
We can work, we can work all that out, you got permission. We have the judge here now, so unless, I mean, I know you've got more stuff, Matt.
So we'll work on the fridges and the freezers and then I'll come back Thursday and talk about the scheduling software. The only other thing is we might have some additional users on our Patagonia because we're hiring those three part-time staff to help schedule. So Donna was already emailing Brian about that. That might be additional cost, but probably not very much. And then my staff are working overtime and we were really good, you know, besides the on-call hours, we were really good about either having them flex off during the same week or, you know, some of them did bank some comp time and they've used it. But I know that we're going to get overtime over the next six months maybe. I mean, I know I worked yesterday and I had other staff that were working yesterday and I told them to go ahead and put that time on their time sheet. So will they bank it as comp time or will they get paid for it?
Currently, there's no overtime budgeted within the health department's budget, so I would ask them to use comp time. Unless you guys want to allow and transfer money in to overtime, then I will add overtime. One way or another, we have to pay them.
And I imagine some of them will want the comp time, but it's going to be on the books for a while, so. Before they can use it because nobody can take off right now.
Again, we'll add comp time, but if you guys want to add overtime, then you don't have to tell me a dollar amount and we'll do a transfer in and then I would change whoever they want to get paid out.
I'm good either way because I need to be compensated for it. So I don't know if there's one answer, if they all want comp time, if some are going to want overtime or.
I think we probably need to do it one way or the other, right?
Yeah, I'd say.
It won't be 100%.
Right.
Is that something we have to solve now, today, this moment?
No, I just wanted to give you a heads up that we are going to have overtime on the books, comp time. We try not to let them carry it, they usually use it right away. But if we bank it, it's going to be on there a while or we could decide later to pay it out.
I think you're going to be doing this more than just a month.
Oh, yeah, that's why I said probably six or eight months. So they're not going to be able to take off and use that comp time.
Just a point to bring up, if you do do the comp time, then the commission can elect every month to pay that comp time off. So that way it's not on her books and they do get some compensation and it's not on the books for a year before they can take any time off. That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
What about my exempt employees? Not me, but like my staff that are exempt, they just don't get, we can't allow them comp time, we can't allow them anything? I thought Jill had said that we could, you could go back and grant exempt employees overtime, but you can't take it away from non-exempt.
You can, you can pay them more, I mean, because they are exempt if it's not tied into overtime.
So you can add to, but you can't take away?
Right.
But there's lots of employees in this county that are exempt that have been looking for it too. So keep that in mind.
And then we will, we have been told that the state is going to have some more money available coming for vaccine clinics and we might be getting this regional implementation team contract. So we will have more funding coming into the health department in addition to the admin fees that we're charging for the vaccines.
Do you guys need to vote on the emergency purchase not to exceed them out or not? I don't know, are you guys going to give me a chance? Do I need to vote, Krista?
Make a motion and we'll just.
I think you can just vote to give them authority to go purchase a freezer and you do the specifics later at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion, I approve the purchase of the refrigerator not to exceed $6,000.
Emergency.
And alarm system.
And the alarm system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do our freezer or wait till Thursday?
I would.
Do you know a dollar amount?
No, let's just wait till Thursday.
I think that's why I was kind of holding off on you.
That's fine. And I need to know whether it's even going to fit. Oh, I love this too.
Okay, we're going to skip around, Matt, because the judge is here. His time is, here, come to judge. Go back to the judge, yeah.
Appreciate everybody working us in between our nine o'clock hearings and our 10 o'clock hearings. I'd gone through kind of what we had done before and then, because I really couldn't get anybody to give me any good answer about monies we had approved, but were unable to spend within the time period. So the only thing that's really is new on the list that we talked about was buying radios for the marshals. I don't know if you've been over there. A docket that used to require was managed by the security team, the gate guards, the private security people. And one marshal has taken us three marshals to do. There's just that many people and that. A docket that used to require was managed by the security team, the gate guards, the private security people, and one marshal has taken us three marshals to do, there's just that many people and that much time. And we are eating up our part-time money aggravated by, I have a marshal who's sick, aggravated by, I have a marshal who's replacement does not start until two one, and we are just. I mean, sucking our part-time budget out right there, notwithstanding the fact that it just takes more hands because of the COVID. So, and those are, are something that we had talked before about the, the part-time security person, and I believe that you guys had approved that, but we're asking for a specific allocation for part-time monies. For the, the part-time marshals that we're using because of the COVID. I mean, we used to not take, it takes, take three people, and today they're asking if Albert could come down to take four, because the volume of people as we try to keep the cases moving. It's gonna get worse if we get a second judge, I have no idea when that's gonna come, I mean.
So do you know approximately what the cost would be?
Well, part-time marshals are about twenty bucks an hour. And, and we were looking for a thousand dollars or a thousand hours on that, that we could use and allocate. You know, some of the part, cause we're just, we're just consuming our entire part-time budget just on the day-to-day, not only filling in for the missing people, which I, I understand would not be a COVID issue. But just the extra hands it takes because of the COVID to manage the line outside. So I, I had put together an email, did you guys get that?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like from one eight, and so the topics there is one of which is, you know, we'd asked for some air filters, you know, one we just got shipped in last week. Okay, the one we, actually that I bought for upstairs, we put downstairs, because it kept the air moving enough, and there's, quite frankly. The way the science is coming out, I think that we're gonna find airborne's a bigger issue than we thought, and that will help us there. Uh, the radios for the marshals, and so, I mean, that's all within the budget that we had, to do that, we just, one, we ordered in September and got last week. So, I mean, I, I don't know how this works, and so that was my question, can I buy more than the original amount that was there? If I don't do that, you know, can I get another one of these large thousand dollar units?
So if you had something on order and it had an open P O, that money is still in CARES?
Right, now I've got everything that we ordered, we just didn't order anything else, because no one could tell us when it would come in, and would there be money if it ever showed up? So. I wouldn't, I would like to get another large unit, we're well under what we originally proposed. The second issue is radios for the marshals, and I'll cut to the chase, we think that's about thirty five hundred dollars, that's a new request that we had not covered before. By the way, we're running people around the building, we think that that. No one was a giant fan of this, and so, I mean, we've looked at this issue over the years, but the consensus was with how we're having to handle the COVID procedures now, that this would help, and so we think that's about thirty five hundred dollars. We've worked with the sheriff, we think we have a system that's interchangeable or interconnected with theirs, and so, uh, that duplicate and then do those things there. We talked about getting a marshal. You know, so another, another set of hands to work the gate, uh, we had asked for, and, and it kinda got lost with the cleaning people, some help just clerk-wise, I mean. We live on case numbers, but I have half the clerks out of the building, and so there's no one there to look at people, we're literally looking at people's case numbers on their phones. And, and because the whole thing is driven by case number. And if we had another clerical person who could do, look up people's case numbers, I mean, that seems like a really simple concept, but it's, it's, it's something that takes everybody's time. The last thing was, you know, we think we need some more equipment, again, we tried to order it, it's not available. The last thing I wanna do is get an order out there, and then so that seven months from now I can get it, and everybody said, well, didn't come in the COVID window. In terms of supporting off-site work, I gave the court reporters laptops to the clerk's office so that they could work remotely, but I'm going to need those back, because the old machines the court reporters have are reaching end of life. And OSC is telling us we can't use them anymore. The last two things I mentioned is, we had a hotspot for, we have a couple clerks that were deployed that don't have internet at their house, this is, you know, a wireless internet solution, and. And we had talked about doing some off-site jury trials, maybe May and June, I don't know, I mean. I think if we're gonna be having trials, everybody's so backed up, it's, it's, you know, we actually have to get a special judge to do the trials, because if we're having trials here in the courthouse, we'll be trying criminal defendants. So, I just, that's what our needs are. So I'm glad to answer any questions.
So you were talking about an additional clerk, is that because we have some clerks working off-site?
Well. We're having, you show up, so then I got to know, well, has your case been continued, because we're trying to continue all the cases we can to keep the people out of the building. For us to determine if your case is continued, I need your case number, if I don't have your case number, then I have to figure out which Sam Bushman you are, and is it B U S H, B U S C H? You know, is it Samuel, is it Bob Samuel, and you go by, and all those sort of things like that, so that's increased the demand, and the marshals are doing it on their phones. That's where the radio thing came up, was they were on their phones all the time, looking up people's case numbers, to try to figure out what's going on with their cases.
But is a shortage of clerks, because we are short clerks, or we've got clerks working remotely?
Well, part of it's cause we have the clerks working remotely, I mean, the clerks. You never had this question of, is my case today? Okay, we had a docket, we had two hundred cases on it, we had a hundred people show up, we could look them up, but we don't, so you show up, you're not on the docket. Then I gotta figure out, are you not on the docket intentionally, was your case continued, I mean, we're having to do a lot more. Clerk's office feels this is not a clerk function, but it is the practical result of COVID, is that we're, we're having to spend this time trying to figure out where these people's cases are. So, um, I mean, this is something traditionally, well firstly, the frequency of the inquiry is way up. So you would have, you know, a couple of these every morning, we would send them up to clerk's office, we would work them through it, but now instead of three people, it's thirty and forty people. You know, we're trying to do that, it just takes an extra set of hands, and if we don't have the extra set of hands, then it stops until we can do it.
I would just say one of the, the clerks that are working remotely need to come back, I don't, I don't understand hiring another clerk, because the clerks that are there are working remotely, so. I, I don't know, I, I don't understand that, that's.
Well, it's, it's, you know, part of it is, you know, the clerks have never really seen that as much of their function, the part of it is, is the frequency of it. You know, well, like I said, this may have been three times on a docket, it's thirty and forty times on a docket. So, that, that, that's why we asked for that, because we're doing it now with the marshals.
Yeah.
And it's taken four marshals to run an associate circuit docket this morning, that we would have one on. So.
So where would radios come out of, Kristen and, uh, part-time marshals? I mean.
Do you want it to come out of CARES?
Well, it's because, it's because, it's because of CARES that, that he has these needs.
Just remember, you have the hundred and fifty nine thousand, I mean, you're going to eat through that quickly.
I know, but then that's the whole idea is that.
I think it's always the first place we go, uh, for, for the, for the dollars, is, is to go ahead and evaporate whatever's left, I, for, uh, you know, valid.
I would just be wary of additional employees or time, because that's ongoing, it would be easier to wipe that out with one-time purchases.
Well, if this is part-time marshals though, then that's not.
This is additional staffing that we're having to put on, I mean, our situation is aggravated by, I have a sick person out, I have a physician that will remain unfilled until one, until February the first. Which, no one told us that they were going to do it that way, that's just how it was announced, and then, you know, then I have these extra hands that are purely a function of the COVID, we would not be there, I would not have people outside.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not COVID related, I'm saying, for CARES purposes, I would prefer not to have something that's ongoing, we're trying to cut it off end of. End of the month, you know, first part of February, get CARES taken care of and out the door, we don't want to commit to something that's going to be ongoing for the next six months.
Right, well, with respect to part-time employees, I mean, we could say this would fund it for two months or something to that effect, and then.
Man, if, if nothing else, if I could, my part-time budget, which is being consumed by CARES activities, you, you know. Over the next month would make, would make a big difference, because, you know, usually we're using part-time budget to cover vacation and sick leave, and to cover training opportunities, and now we're using it just for hands, and we're using it, you know, for, for COVID. So I mean.
So we do have this salary money that we pay back to general fund for the health department people that we could allocate, that's currently sitting in contingency for that part-time staff.
What I wanna do is get to, get to nine months into the year and be completely out of part-time help money, again, cause when we get to the jury trials, it takes extra sets of hands. And have missed the opportunity to apply that to CARES money.
I just think it would be easier to give them a blanket, if you're gonna do a thousand hours or whatever, you give them that to have the freedom to spend when they need it.
Right.
To bring people in, than saying you have to spend this in the next two months or whatnot.
Right, well, I'm just putting a termination date on it, it, it's not, it's not open-ended, somehow you close it, so, do, uh, are we talking about a, uh, an ask? That's got each one of these things, uh, air filters, radios, part-time help outside, part-time help clerk, additional equipment, and with a dollar amount on each side of it, and we, we go up or down and, and. And it's, it's one of these COVID requests, CARES request, right?
I mean, I think you could separate everything else, if it's the radio, if it's the air, if it's a one-time purchase, we can approve that out of CARES today, uh, like she was talking about, the personnel, if we just do a transfer out of contingency and it is part-time, and label it for this. And label it for so much money that you wanna do, I think we could go forward with that as of today.
Okay, and then Greg will be here Thursday with a proposal for some kind of a shelter.
Okay.
So.
And I'll give you a list of what you approved today, minus hand for that one twenty nine, if that's all right, or an estimate of the budget, we'll know more when these two come back with the actual price of the freezer and the refrigerator. But I didn't get the air filter, how much was that?
The, the big one like I've got downstairs was like a thousand dollars.
And you want how many more?
I would just take one more of that, I mean.
And then how many hotspots?
The, uh, we've got one now, and we pay forty dollars a month for it, they're about two hundred and fifty dollars apiece, but I've not gotten.
I think that Brian has a better cost on that, I think we're paying way less than that for the ones that we acquired.
At least for people that are quarantined then, or?
Yeah, people that can't.
Okay.
We still have people that.
So they're quarantined and they're still at home working, because if we got limited access to the courthouse, then we need to have all the clerks, everybody on hand there. So, but I mean, that's what the, who, who are the hotspots for?
We had, we had one clerk that had to go home that could work, I mean, they weren't sick, they just had to go home under the quarantine rules, and, um. They, they did not have internet, well, actually, this person's wife was working at home already, and they didn't have internet that would support two of them, is how that one came out.
So, you have one, and how many more do we?
I, I don't, I'm not asking for any more, I'm just asking to cover the forty.
Oh, the forty per month.
So I think that Brian actually, we need to talk to him, he had a better deal under the, there he is.
Big Brian? No, it wasn't me this time, it wasn't me this time.
Do you know what the cost of the hotspots were that we acquired, and you still have one?
I have three, all three, I'm gonna check back in.
So you have a three total, and we are already paying for those, if we want to eliminate their hotspot, they can check one out.
Check one out, that would work.
Yeah.
I would, that, let's just do that.
That would eliminate that problem.
What is your cost? What do yours cost?
What's that, what's my cost?
What do yours cost?
It's like forty five dollars a month.
Yeah, see.
We're all three though, right?
Well, the other, it's like each.
Each, yeah.
Yeah, we, we are on FirstNet, so we thought that, you know, what we looked at was, was a pretty competitive price of forty dollars a month for the internet access, the unit.
So he has them, you can just have them, check it out.
We could check his out, as long as he wants to pay the forty five.
Ryan's a nice guy.
I'm gonna offset you by charging more cash.
Yeah.
Okay, I will, uh, recharge a bunch of that stuff, and, um, is he okay to get those radios and the air, air machine?
Yes, I'm.
Jessica, look into it.
I'm fine.
You got one air filter, then you got thirty five hundred for the radios, in a way it sounds, is that something that the sheriff's office can use if, once this is over, if we don't need them at the courthouse anymore?
No, I think that, that those radios need to stay with the bailiffs from this point on, it's better communications, the way we worked it out was, is that my jail staff now, will be able to direct, we'll be able to communicate directly, cause it's the same frequency base that we're going across. So we've worked together to make sure, and they are not a, uh, they're not a very expensive radio, so.
Okay, well, and that makes a lot more sense too, cause then we can use them for something else, other communication over there, so.
Yeah, this is a really good idea.
Okay.
Well, and the sheriff's office is, I mean, quite frankly, goes back to Greg wanting us to do it, and we just didn't get very much interest out of our people in doing it, but what we found was, is that, you know, communications back and forth, the domain is, is going way up, and they're spending all their time on their phones looking up case numbers. So.
Okay.
And we got the marshal part-time, thousand hours.
But that would be, you know, I don't, you really be talking about, I mean, how many months we're talking about, you're talking about six months, you're talking about two months? And I, like I said, I'd just like to get some of my part-time money that I'm using on these COVID purposes.
So if we look at three months and revisit it after you got your sick one back, and then maybe in three months?
Yeah.
Quarterly, every quarter we'll revisit.
I think that's gonna have contingency, so, the way you're talking about, I mean, that makes sense to me, that would.
Get the transfer ready for three months, and that would revisit.
Okay, that's fair.
Something, I'll bring this up, and hopefully the judge don't get mad, but, uh, something that you guys did with us was on our part-time, is you gave us a set amount of part-time, and the comment to me was, we don't care how many you hire, but you gotta stay under this amount. So I think if you just allot a block of money, cause that could go up and down depending upon the cases that are coming, so if you just give them that block of money, then they don't have to keep coming back to you saying, we need to hire another part-time, they can hire as many as they want, as long as they're staying under that number. Because it's part-time, so there's no benefits involved in it, so I think if you do that, then that'll give them ability, and they don't have to keep running back to you all the time.
Well, that would be a thousand hours for three months, so three thousand dollars, twenty dollars for one.
Oh, I don't think it would be near that high, I mean, one F T's.
I think he's like a thousand hours for a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
One F T's a hundred and twenty-five hours. I mean, I'd like to take it, but I don't, I can't get that many people to apply.
You're just naming one part-time person right now.
Right.
And. So, did you do that math all in your head?
Five thousand, three one, yeah, five thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars plus benefits.
We didn't get the benefit of those much last week.
Part-time, the only benefit would be, uh, FICA, Medicare, right?
We do offer you, it, it won't be.
Okay.
So I can go ahead and order radios, okay, and.
The other vent, once you get that going, or the air filter, I'm sorry.
The last thing, I mean, we talked about all the other stuff, but the last thing we talked about was a little more electronic equipment, but I can't give you a real number, because. I have these, I brought new laptops, we bought new laptops for all the court reporters, and then I gave them to the clerk's office, so that, you know, to support the offsite. And then, so I need to buy new laptops for the court reporters, but they're not available yet. If that makes any sense, I went to order, and they said, well, that model is end of life, we have to get a new one, so.
Maybe come back when you have a better idea of what, what that is and.
Okay.
These are for laptops being used in the office.
These are really well.
Not just taken home and being used.
Where there being some used at home, and then, like I said, and I'm sure some are being used. being used in the office, so. All I know is when I went to ask for them back, there was a lot of squaling.
Get with all great women, have them help.
You're a great one.
Yeah.
You.
Do we supply those, or those state?
We actually pay for them, but we purchase them from the state because it's, they're the ones that support them.
Okay, why don't they pay for them?
They actually pay for a computer for every state employee, okay? But these are the ones that they take into the courtroom, these are part of the electronic court reporting system.
And they do take them home and?
Yeah, they take them home and they finish transcripts at home, and it's not like they don't use them, and the problem, and, and we were in good shape, I had them, we got them bought, we were all ready to go, and then, you know, when I needed all hands on deck with COVID, we made the decision to deploy them, and then getting them back has proven a little more difficult than I anticipated.
Judge, you have just a few more minutes.
Yeah, we're already late.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we got them, you got it all, didn't you?
Okay. So we will go back to, if I heard you, PST, PS tracks addition, additional station subscription. Some chart.
Just say anything, email us.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Wait, yes or no? Got more in it, but yes.
Same thing, but in addition to.
No, that can't be the same, they're different.
Good morning again, gentlemen.
Did I find your email or not?
So this is just the annual, so it's $200 a station in order for us to keep track of those requirements of safety inspections, medication inspections, those types of things. So it's a total of $400 that we'd ask that we get added on, we're below the 6,000 cost on that. Again, this is basically just amending, amending what we currently use or have with them. So I'd ask for approval for $400 to add two stations to that agreement that we currently That's the very first one, should be in your packet.
PS tracks, additional station subscription.
What's the cost per year after that?
It's just $400 extra. So it's 200 per station.
So this, what we did earlier?
So just, just this, sir. This is the one you're looking for. Very first.
So now the sheet's behind it?
Yeah, just this one.
Can't do that, do you? Okay, now, back to PS tracks. This is for the two new?
This is for the county park in the O Sage, so that we, we have to be able to check all of the items in the truck and all that.
I move we approve the PS tracks pricing proposal to add the two additional stations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Audio/video equipment, new vendor?
So you guys approved this about two weeks ago, we made a mistake, we didn't realize that the county had already spent roughly $3,500, and so I was going to take it over. So we checked B and H, we have not spent anything as a county with them. We got it $200 cheaper for the main equipment, but then we also had forgotten that we didn't put speakers with any of it, so it basically raised the price about $80 in totality. So we'd ask for approval of the $5,191.55 through B and H, and this is for the camera systems and stuff that we would use for training, etc.
Not CARES.
I'm sorry?
Not CARES.
I mean, it's related to it, but I think it's gonna, I think they had said they were going to take it out, it was already been moved over, I think was the plan.
So previously, there was determination to spend about $5,100 with vendor A, and now we're going to spend about $5,200 with vendor B.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move approval of the invoice from B and H for the $5,191.55.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, ProQA EMD dispatch software renewal.
All right, so this is the ProQA system that we do, this is just an annual renewal that we have to do for 2,560, and this is the, the software that they use to perform the emergency medical dispatching of questions, answers, things like that that they use. Very important. Yes, sir.
Same as last year?
Uh, I would have to go back and look, to be honest. I believe it is, but I don't want to say for sure.
I'm spending all the money over here, Jeff, can you help me out?
No, that's why I kept it, so that's what you had in the budget for this year, right?
I think it's, might be $60 more than it was, but, yes, sir.
So when you run out of money, you run out of money.
Yes, sir.
I don't see ProQA on here, it's the 2,560, right?
Yes, sir. So it's through priority dispatch, the software is called ProQA.
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve the ProQA EMD dispatch software renewal for 2,560.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ProQA quality performance auditing renewal.
So this one is also an annual item, this one did go up about $2,000, if I recall, than what was previous to last year. I spoke with Kristin about if we thought doing it internally, she said from an auditor standpoint, we always wanted to have somebody, a third-party check our performance would be a better way to do it, I agree with that. So this is the 25,350. What this does is, this is an outside agency that looks at the performance of our dispatchers and makes sure that they're doing the right things, if there's areas that we can improve. These are all types of quality assurance and quality improvement process, so they are the only company that can do set auditing from their ProQA software side of things. So, again, annual thing that we do, and so we'd ask for your approval for the $25,350 to priority dispatch for quality, quality performance review.
Good, I make a motion, we approve the ProQA quality performance auditing renewal for 25,350.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First watch, first pass, annual payment approval.
So this is the first watch annual agreement as well, notice all this comes right after budget time. For $12,090, or I'm sorry, $12,927, this is what we use to integrate with ESO, it does all of our triggers, first watch, first pass, one of the things that it does is it automatically flags trips for review when there's abnormalities, the medical director, myself, and the training division can also go through and look at that as well, and then it also does trigger. So if we have a call at the Capitol or the governor's mansion or anywhere else, it automatically alerts individuals that's set up to trigger, so we know those are going on, it flags different types of things, shows us response times, shows us shoot times, and it's a very robust system that we use to keep our situational awareness and improve our system from just an operational and a medical standpoint. Annual cost, again, $12,927.
So I'll make a motion, approve the first watch, first pass, annual payment approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Station recliner approval.
All right, so this one is Missouri Furniture, so we need some recliners for these new stations so that people can sit. So the total amount would be $1,799.96. We could get super cheap ones, but the honest reality is, is we'll be doing this every three months or four months because they'll destroy them, so we need some robust ones. And again, I'd ask for approval, $1,799.96 for recliners.
So you're going to get four years out of these?
I'm going to do my best, sir.
We got to have them in time for the Super Bowl so we can come out.
Right.
Because you got the big TVs there, too.
No, sir, not big TVs.
Who is "we"?
Oh.
So we talked about it, I was like, you can get.
You said "we."
Like you said, we've done that with office chairs, too.
We need to go out and examine.
You can get the $45 ones, and you're going to be broken.
Check them out.
Yes, sir.
The last set that we bought for them when we had problems down south have held up very well. That was in 2018.
No questions, or?
No, I'm good.
Make a motion, we approve the station recliner purchase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjustment to EMS county park build-out approval.
Good morning, gentlemen, I think you guys know a little, some of you may know a little bit about this. John Blue was the plumber on the Cole County Fire Station, he gave us a bid. Initially, we were connecting to the bathroom that was already there, we're on the backside of the wall, they decided it was going to be easier to have a separate entrance, it started off as a bathroom and a shower, turned into a bathroom. John did not have a toilet in his bid. When we got the bill, the bill was considerably more than what his initial quote was. I went back to check with him to see who had authorized it, no one had, so he did offer to make an adjustment, and this adjustment would be to 4,262, which is $500 more than what his initial quote was. He did a very nice job, but I would ask for approval of the $500 for change order for John Blue coming.
So I did talk to the chief about this, and we, basically adding a toilet.
Correct, there was a, there was a, there was, there, on the opposite side of the wall, there was already a bathroom there with no shower. We were going to add a shower, that was going to be more cost prohibitive than what it was putting a shower, sink, and then turned into a bathroom then, but there was no toilet figured.
So he basically went on.
Somewhere along the line, he added the toilet.
He added the toilet.
And for whatever reason, he thought it was supposed to be there.
Correct.
So when we were talking, if we want to keep the toilet and stuff there, I said I was fine, we'll, we'll pay the cost of the materials, which probably, I think 500 would probably be about fair, as long as he eats the labor part on it.
So we went to him after talking with you guys, and, you know, individually, and talked to you guys about, hey, how did we want to try to handle this? He did agree to cut his, because it was $1,000 that he had submitted overbid, he agreed to cut it down to that 500, so basically half. If we don't do that, then he technically can come and take the toilet. So I think that this is probably the easiest way to go about it. But he, we do have in writing that no one authorized this, that he did this on his own.
I think it's fair to both, though.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, if you come and pull that toilet up, we're going to have to go spend $300 to buy the toilet, and then have somebody put it in, so. We got the underground stuff, I don't think he's going to go through the time of digging that back up, so I think it's fair to just move on.
I agree.
All right, so I'll make a motion, we approve the adjustment to the MS County Park build-out approval for the total invoice amount of 4,262, which was $500 more than bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. We already did, we had additional hours for nurse practitioner, that's what we, okay. Do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
I was going to ask you a question.
No, no, I'm just seeing if we have any, any more questions before we go into closed session?
I don't think so.
Going once? Going twice? So.
All right, make a motion, we go into closed session, pursuant to section 610021, subsections two for real estate and 19 for security issues.
Second.
Roll call.
Here.
Aye.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Okay.
You should have bet me today on the over, I mean, we still have closed session, but.
Well, you see, I'm rich.